Good evening, everybody. With it being just after six Thursday on Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. And just a reminder that on March 12th, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law to enable public bodies to carry out their responsibilities while adhering to public health recommendations regarding social distancing. The executive order relieves public bodies from requirement in the open meeting law that meetings be conducted in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public, provided that the public body makes provisions to ensure public access to the deliberations of the public body through adequate alternative means. And our alternative means is we are on Zoom and we have listed the Zoom meeting information on the school district website. Just as a reminder to everybody that this meeting is being recorded, and if all goes well, most likely will be posted onto the school district website. First item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve our April 28, 2020 minutes.
So moved.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member McCarron?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui?
Yeah.
Member Neferrata?
Yes.
Chairman Herten?
Yes, it's a unanimous vote and the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Dogan.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone's faces. I'm going to start my report tonight by taking some time to recognize two important school committee members whose meeting, last meeting, is tonight, unfortunately. First, I'd like to start with recognizing Mr. David Herten. Mr. Herten, you've been on the school committee, I think if we have our data correct, for the past six years. You were first elected in 2014 and you were appointed as the school committee chair in 2017. You've served on countless committees, including the Park Avenue Building Committee, several superintendent searches, and currently you're on the Bartlett High School Building Committee. You've been an instrumental member and leader on the school committee for the past six years. I want to thank you for your unwavering support and dedication to the Webster Public Schools students and staff and administrators. Your steady leadership over the past six years, and in particular with, under my leadership, has been instrumental to helping us take the necessary steps of change in Webster. I am personally going to miss you very much and I wish you very, the very best on your next adventure because something tells me that you're not going to sit around and do nothing, even though you're leaving this committee. So I want to thank you for that and recognize you for that.
Thank you very much.
I also want to take the time to, once again, thank Mr. McCarron for, first of all, stepping back into the school committee after serving, I think you've been the longest standing school committee member in the history of the Webster Public Schools.
That's what they tell me, yeah.
Yeah. You've returned to serve in a short-term, one-year stint and you've done that very well. We can't thank you enough for your steady leadership and ongoing commitment to always be there as a resource to all school committee members and you helped us out in the past year. We will definitely need you as well and we wish you the very best. And again, I'm going to say that I think I'm going to see the both of you somehow, somewhere, some way. So I'm pleased about that. Thank you so much for all of your help.
No, thank you. It's been a pleasure and a privilege to serve with the committee.
May I say something? I don't know who.
This is the first time as Chair I don't recognize my fellow committee members. I'm joking.
Please do, Chair.
So before I ran for school committee, I can honestly say that, you know, I didn't really realize, right, all the hours that board members put in behind the scenes. I was told, "It's two meetings a month."
Ah, that's the, yeah, that's the big line.
Right? That's the line. So you really only know about the meetings because they're on a schedule, you know, and you hear about them, "Oh, what happened at the school committee meeting?" You know, but countless hours are spent on projects, like the Park Ave Building Committee. What was that, a 10-year project? Now we're on the Bartlett Building Committee together. So, you know, I am extremely excited that we'll still be working together on that. You know, but there's also research that comes behind it, preparation. There's just so many aspects of it that I don't think people really know or see until you're in it. You know, at times it's a thankless job, but you've both handled it eloquently and professionally. And I was very glad to have spent, been able to spend time with both of you. I know I've only been on the committee for two years, but it was, you know, I've learned a lot from both of you and I feel that you've both been strong advocates for continuous improvement in our students' learning. And I wish you the best in whatever, but I do think that Ruth Ann is correct and we will be seeing more of you, or still some of you. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I do want to just let you know that, I'm sorry, Kelly, there is a little something that should be arriving at each of your houses, just a little something to say on how much we appreciate you from all of us.
Thank you.
I don't think I can put it as nicely as Sheila did, but I would definitely echo your sentiments, Sheila, and just personally want to thank both of you for all of your leadership over the three years that I've been a part of the committee. It's been a real privilege to be able to serve with both of you and learn from your leadership. And, you know, can't thank you enough for all that you've done for the district and for the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I concur with, sorry, with both Kelly and Sheila that, you know, you, both of you have just been great mentors, really, in guiding the way for those of us that have come along. And, you know, you're definitely part of the change that has happened here in Webster. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, I want to thank you for never asking me very difficult questions. So please don't mess it up tonight. But it's been great having you on the committee. I'm sure I'll be seeing you in the future.
Okay, I'm going to jump in now. I just wanted to thank you both for all your support for all of us here in central administration over the years. We always feel like that we can come to you and discuss issues and concerns. And it's great to have that open relationship, to be able to communicate those things and feel supported every day when you come into work. I know it's not easy sitting on the committee, being a parent, having kids in school, being such a part of the community, and separating those roles, in a sense. Because when you're sitting on the committee, you're not always, you're not there as the parent, you're there as the committee supporting the board, kind of, and you're putting that on the side. And that's not an easy task to do for any of you. So, you know, we just want to thank you for that. I know the support doesn't stop tonight. I know you will always advocate for our schools and our kids here in Webster, maybe just in a different capacity than sitting on the school committee. I know, Mr. Herten, you're still going to be on the school building committee, so you'll be advocating for us in a different way. I don't think there's any plans to jump ship yet. So, we'll keep plugging away and plugging forward and you'll be missed. And we just want to thank you for your strong leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, several years ago, many years ago, two fine gentlemen that I respect tremendously approached me and asked me if I would run for school committee. And I said to both of them, I won't give their names even though one's on the screen right now. I said to both of them, "I'm not a politician. I don't, I mean, I go to town meeting and I follow what's going on in town, but I'm not really the political type." And they both said, "Actually, that's good because we don't want politicians on the committee." And I'll never forget actually asking Mike specifically how he did it so many years. And he said, "First of all, it was always about the kids, which we always tried to focus on. And especially in the last six years, but probably longer than that, Mike can attest to this, I have served with truly professional, caring, kind-hearted people, both as members as well as administrators. Did we always agree? No, and that's okay. And it's good to have discussions in a professional manner." But Mike has told the story numerous times that he has friends or in business acquaintances, when they find out he's on, and people around town, when they find out he's on the school committee, they always say, "Yeah, but we never see a name in the paper." And that's exactly what we want. We don't want it to be political. We want to be there to support and to guide and to question in an appropriate manner, but certainly always focusing on the kids. So I appreciate the kind words. And I would just say to whoever's watching, and I have no idea if anyone watches these meetings, you know, to the people in the community, please go out and vote. Please get to know the candidates that are running. It is important, I believe, that we continue as a committee to move forward and not have anybody, and I'm not saying anyone would, but making sure that they don't turn it into a political-type role and they really understand what the legal, as well as appropriate, role of any school committee member is. So it's been an absolute privilege serving with all of you and the fine people that were on the committee when I started six years ago. So our term got a little extended, unfortunately, because of the virus. And as Mr. McCarron pointed out early on, we'll get that big extra stipend in our pay for serving on the committee in a couple, an extra month and a half. But again, thank you for your kind words. I appreciate it.
Okay. I am going to give you my lengthy report. As you know, the Commissioner of Education has approved our waiver. So we will be going to school the original 180 days and the last day of school is Monday. I, there have been a number of things that have been going on. We had a grads parade on June 5th. I want to give a public shout-out to the Webster PD, Fire EMS, our cafeteria staff, our custodians, and AA bus drivers. It was a wonderful day to see all of our seniors on the buses and families and community members come out and line the streets and cheer on the graduates. Certainly something different that we put together in an effort to celebrate our graduates. We are planning on having high school graduation on July 18th. The high school administrative team is working on a COVID-19 response plan that will be reviewed from our Board of Health in town. And once that's approved, that will be set. Unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 health crisis, it won't be a graduation that is open to the public, but it will be outside and the students will receive set number of tickets with more information will be sent to their families. We also had, the high school also had a virtual announcement of the scholarships and athletic awards that was posted on cable TV. And I am sure that you've seen downtown plastered with signs to celebrate and congratulate our seniors. And I want to give a shout-out to Carol Marshand who, and Lisa Kontos, who gave pictures of all of our seniors and she put together a slideshow that's running on the marquee downtown. We really feel that although this has been a very difficult time for our seniors, that the whole community has wrapped around the kids and celebrated them. And we could certainly feel that at the graduates parade on Friday. Grades closed on June 8th and our teachers are planning some fun extracurricular enrichment activities remotely. I know that more information will be coming out in my newsletter and from the principals this week. But just to give you a heads-up, they are planning a reverse parade for the elementary school students on the last day of school at Park Avenue. They are planning a eighth grade recognition, sort of things in a drive-by, safe fashion over at the Webster Middle School on June 17th. And more information will be forthcoming from Webster Middle School. I want to let you know that we applied for and received the ST Math Grant of the Massachusetts Initiative. We already have the ST grant that for grades K through four. But this allows us to have this program that we shared with you that's a non-verbal math software program for grades five and six. We're getting the kids signed up so they'll have access throughout the summer, next fall and next summer. There is zero charge for this program. I want to give a shout-out to Jill Chapdeline, our Director of Curriculum for Math and Science, for pushing, pushing the plug on that grant. I also want to let you know that we have purchased some online software programs, additional programs for summer supports that we'll be offering to all of our students. Lexia Math, I mean Lexia Reading for the elementary school and for the middle school and Reflex Math. And we have a number of other existing programs. That information is going out to parents. Our students will be keeping their Chromebooks this summer and they can use those programs whenever they want throughout, throughout July. And on July 31st, they'll be shut off because we have to turn over our programs and set up our next rosters for our kids. As you may or may not know, we are anxiously waiting for some more direct guidance on what schooling will look like in the fall. I have a meeting with the Commissioner of Education on Friday. Some initial guidance has come out for summer school. We are currently planning remote summer school. Mrs. Barris is going to be surveying just the high-risk population, special education students, to see if they would come in if that was available and if they would ride on special education buses. So things are a work in progress. Once I receive the guidance for what school will potentially look like in the fall, as I have shared with you, there, I do have a committee of volunteers, teachers across the district who are willing to sit on that committee and the central office team. We will be plotting and planning how we will meet the mandates of that plan. The Commissioner of Education has made it very clear that once he shares the plan, they will be more like mandates rather than recommendations for the fall. And I know there's been a lot of things on the news and in my newsletter I did share with you, nothing is final. There's been some talk that students would come for a week, one week on, one week off. None of that is final. So we really are anxiously waiting for that information because it makes it very difficult to plan if you don't know what the school model is going to look like. For our summer school, we are offering Title I Summer School for Park Avenue and Webster Middle School. This is remotely and it will be run July 6th through July 30th. And there will be sessions that will be set up for the students between 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m., which will be on Wednesdays and Thursdays. The Bartlett High School Title I Summer School is going to be strictly a credit recovery program for students in grades nine through 12. And that will run for three weeks, every day, Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 12:30. And it will be remote as well. Special education summer invitations have gone out and that will run July 6th through August 6th. And that will run Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And then finally, we are offering our past 21st century summer programming, open for all students. That information will be sent out to parents and that will run July 6th through the 30th on Mondays and Tuesdays, only from 9:00 to 11:00. And that will be a project-based, fun activity tied with learning program. I want to let you know that the Southern Western County Collaborative Quarter III reports are there for your review. Their meeting dates are set for the next school year. I also want to let you know that Desi has the best timing. I think it was the second week in our remote learning when we were at high-stress level, trying to figure out remote learning. And I received the coordinated district review for us to take a peek at. And that review happened in March of 2019. It is in your portal for your review. As, as you read it, you will see that we've made significant progress since that time. But I do want to point out that they have some valid areas that we are still working on, that we talk about all the time. And that's making sure that all students have equitable access to advanced coursework and that we continually look at the quality of instruction across the district and that we continually give useful feedback during our evaluations of staff. And other updates, I want to let you know that we have been spending a tremendous amount of time worrying and planning and trying to figure out what our budget will look like. Tonight, we're going to present you with a reduced budget. And our main goal is, as you know, it's very difficult to plan when you don't know what your numbers are going to be. And this year, unlike other years, it's very difficult to plan when you don't know what your school model is going to look like. So we've been working, the administrative team, on different versions of what possibly could happen. I'm very pleased to let you know that we've been working collaboratively with our union leaders and we're going to be presenting a memorandum of agreement, or memorandum of understanding, Ellen, tonight from both the paraprofessional union and the teachers' union. And that has taken a great weight off of us because it gives us a little bit more time to plan and gather information and protect people. So I, in terms of the finance, we're also working very closely with our town, as you know. And we've had many meetings with the town administrator and accountant. We do have a finance meeting scheduled for Monday, July 15th, I believe at 6 o'clock. And then the town meeting is scheduled for June 22nd and that is in the Bartlett High School Gymnasium and that is in person. Finally, in my report, I would just like to let you know that we did do a survey for our parents and our teachers and our staff. And I've shared the results with you in your portal on how parents felt about our remote learning and how much time kids spent. And they are very, the results are very, very positive. We had about 87 Park Avenue parents respond and students were engaged, anywhere from 30 minutes to four hours a day in learning. And there were similar responses from the kids. I won't go into the details, but I would ask that you take a peek at it. We will be using this information because something tells me that we're going to have somewhat of a blended approach. I don't know for sure. So our remote learning has gotten better over the course of the three months and this information will be used to continually advance what we do if we have, as we continue any remote learning. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Blythe?
I don't really have a question, but I wanted to, I know I told you this privately, but I just want to thank you so much, to you and Mo and the team and Mr. Thomas for, you know, putting, putting the parade on. You know, just going to see the buses decorated and, you know, and just seeing the kids together, right? Not, not so much like all over each other, but they were in, you know, they were all smiles after the buses got back at the barbecue. So they really had a good time. So, I mean, you guys are doing great things with what we have, right? So just continuing to move forward and being positive. So I really appreciate everything. And that's from a parent's perspective. I'm saying that as a parent. So thank you very much.
It was a great day and it was a good, it was really good to see the kids. I do want to, for those that are listening, point out that the telegram came and got some great pictures of the kids, but got it really wrong when they reported out that that's what we were only doing for the kids. And that was their graduation and we were giving out certificates.
Diplomas.
We did not give out their graduation certificates. That was not their graduation ceremony. But it was a good day. And it actually was, you know, we haven't had crowds together and what, we did learn stuff. We learned, you know, that it's going to be very difficult. I'm going to be real, to keep kids six feet apart. We're going to have to have visual reminders. And, you know, we're going to learn as we go. But it was great. It was great. And our cafeteria staff did a wonderful job packing lunches with special labels and making cupcakes for the kids.
The cupcakes are great.
And the bus drivers were so excited to drive those decorated buses. They let the buses get dropped off days before kids came and decorated buses. Our staff were there from across the district with signs. Community members were out. It really was special. So special that the, some of the high school staff said, "Maybe we should consider doing this every year."
Some of the parents are saying that, too.
We're not giving up the grad parade through the school.
Right, yeah. Some of the parents commented on that as well. It was just so nice to see, you know, to see them all. So it was nice.
It was.
For the whole community to be out there and see them and wish them well.
Webster pride.
Day. From where I was sitting, yeah. Yeah, it was good, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is the Business Manager Report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is School Building Committee update. The building committee hasn't met, but that doesn't mean there's not a lot of work going on behind the scenes. We advertised in the Central Register and the local Telegram and Gazette on June 3rd that our RFS was available for pickup. To date, we've received 31 requests for the RFS for OPM services for the high school. Tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. here at Bartlett, we're having an informational meeting. It's not mandatory. It's optional for people who picked up requests. But I know I've gotten a lot of emails and there are quite a few people coming and were interested in the meeting. So we'll be doing that here at 9:00 tomorrow morning, followed up with a little quick walkthrough. They can ask questions and submit questions in. I need to, the questions need to be received from us by June, on June 12th. And I need to make sure I respond by the end of business on June 15th to any of their requests. Proposals are due in this office on June 17th at 2:00 p.m. And then that's where the real work gets going. The OPM committee will start sitting down and sifting through those proposals to come up with a short list for June 24th. So it's busy. There's a lot going on, but it's exciting busy. And I can't wait to see what we have in actual submittals for requests. It seems like there's a lot of interest out there. So that's a good thing for us. There any questions on that? All right, next item is the Food Service update. There has been a lot going on in the food service world. I put a little flyer, I don't know if you've seen this, in the box. This is called Farmers to Families Food Box. As you know, with the coronavirus and the pandemic going on, there has been many farmers with produce that is going to waste with all the restaurants and hotels being shut down. There's an excess in produce and other products out there. So part of the coronavirus food assistance program, this has nothing to do with our National School Lunch Program. This is totally separate. So there's no reimbursement, there's no offset in costs. It's just free food for us as a community. Secretary Perdue announced that he has been authorized to purchase and distribute products to those in need. So he put, after purchasing this, he put information out there through communities, stakeholder groups, nonprofits, food banks, asking if anybody's interested to get this food out. Ellen was kind of following this and, and you know Ellen, she is not one to sit back. She quickly came to me and said, "I think we can do this. Is this something we can do?" So we talked it through, and I said, absolutely, let's jump on it. Let's get it going. So they handed out flyers through our food lines that people were coming to get food daily. How it works is these shipments come in on Wednesday, and they come in pallets of fifty-six. So we're allowed to get two pallets. We put the information out there and we asked them to call into our office. I want to thank Colleen. She's been working with Ellen on this. I kind of assigned her to the task, taking calls in from parents and coming up with a list and prioritizing, you know, by the calls and how they come in and who's going to receive a box of food. These boxes are not just a small box. These are twenty-two pound boxes of produce. These boxes contain potatoes, carrots, bell peppers, cucumbers, lettuce, cherry tomatoes, cantaloupes, oranges, apples, pears. That's what's in these boxes every week. So it's really exciting to see how this has transformed. We've been getting a hundred and twelve boxes, two, two pallets. We currently have a hundred and thirty-four names on the list. From the first week, it's kind of increased, and there's more people asking for them now. We're kind of rotating and doing alternate weeks between people. So everybody will at least get a box every other week. So nobody will go without. We get deliveries on Wednesday, and we hand them out on Thursdays. It so happens that they put, and as you can see, the farmers are sending stuff to the distributors, and the distributors are sending it to families. We have a local distributor, Costa, who is, who works with us, who just happens to be our DOD fresh delivery also. So they're getting the produce in and delivering it up to us. We haven't had any issues with deliveries. And the feedback we've gotten has been so positive from our families. I can share a few comments that we've gotten from some parents. One of them said, let me start by saying how absolutely impressed I am with these produce boxes. They're so much better than I have ever expected. They're so great and helpful. The kids can't get enough salad with that fancy lettuce in the box. So it, it's just been, it's just kind of exploded, and it's been really successful. This is running through June 30th, where we don't know where it's going to go after that, if it's going to be continued. But I know if it, if it is extended, we're on board. We're going to continue to do it as long as they can have it. And I just want to thank Ellen for her willingness to just go above and beyond always for our community members and making sure that we're putting out healthy, good quality food. So I want to thank her for that. And I want to thank Colleen for participating and, and helping her out with the additional duties of organizing all of that. So that, that's one thing in the food service world. The second thing I wanted to let you know about was the, part of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act of 2020. They had issued pandemic electronic benefit transfers, or otherwise known as PEBT cards. What this does is it brings in additional, cards will be sent out to families. In order to qualify for these cards, it's all of Massachusetts, pre-K through 12, students who are eligible for free or reduced school lunch meals, or districts that are CEP. As you know, our district is CEP qualified. So that means all of our families will be receiving EBT cards for our kids in the district. Each student will receive benefits that's equivalent to the cost of breakfast and school lunch each day. So that's five seventy a day for the month, and the total benefit they'll determine. How they're issuing this again is not a program through the National School Lunch. It was a separate program offered through the state of Massachusetts. They've kind of put, Project Bread has kind of taken the lead on this for them and helping out. They're really, you know, it was a great program that they put into place, but it wasn't really under one person's oversight. So there are a lot of questions and things, and Project Bread took it on themselves and said they'd be willing to assist in processing all of this. So cards were sent out to SNAP members first, a few weeks ago. And then they're issuing cards to all others. So if you're not free or reduced, but you're part of a CEP district like we are, you should be getting cards. I did put this flyer so you could get some information. So if you get questions, we're also putting it out in the newsletter. I know Ellen's tweeted some information, and I'll put some information up on our website for parents because there's been questions about activating these cards and going through it. It can be a little tricky, I guess. And they've had some problems on the backend with the phone numbers not working and stuff like that. So they're coming out with further guidance. But it's another benefit the state has done for our families during this difficult time. They understand that many people have been out of work, and they're doing everything they can to assist our families. Is there any questions in that? No? Okay, on to the next food service item. It's that time. Can you believe we're already finished our four-year cycle of CEP? So that is our community eligibility provision. So we have been doing that for four years now. It's time to renew. As you know, we have been improving with our participation every year. And our, and our goal was, through all of this, is not to profit, not to make money, but just to break even. If we can break even or come close to breaking even and feed all our families every day, good quality breakfast and lunch where they don't have to worry about food. We were, the committee, the school committee actually agreed to, even if this was going to cost them a little bit, that this was a benefit they wanted to do for our families. And it, like I said, it's improved every year. Till last year, we were actually breaking even. With everything that's going on, it's almost a good time for us to renew. The state has extended their renewal periods. We typically have to renew by April 1st, but they've extended out those guidelines to June 30th. So what that means is anybody who qualified after the April 1st deadline, we all know that coronavirus happened mid-March, right? And so now more people are getting benefits. By delaying that, it's actually increased our numbers. Since, I can tell you since March 13th, when we closed, up until the end of May, I believe, was our last file, we picked up approximately a hundred and nineteen families who are receiving benefits. So that adds to our numbers. So if, if you remember with CEP, we were at the fifty-two percentile, and then you have that 1.6 multiplier, which meant that we were getting paid eighty-three percent at a free rate, seventeen percent at a paid rate. The break even part has always been at sixty-two, sixty-two percent. If you're sixty-two percent, your, your program's going to break even. You're going to do all right. With these additional numbers, my initial is right around that sixty-two percent. So that's really good news for us as far as a district, because once you're kind of locked in, you're locked into that rate for the term of your agreement. It doesn't change any, every year. So we are working on that now, finalizing those numbers, but they look positive for us. I got confirmation from the state today because I'm like, is this too good to be true? Do we get to count right up through June 30th? And they said, yes, we do. So we're, we're working on that. We will be submitting in our numbers by June 15th in the state portal for our renewal, and I don't foresee any problems with that. So that's good. And then last, under food service, is our summer feeding program. Summer feeding program will be starting on June 15th. What does that mean for us? It means we're going to see a small amount of change in our sites. As you know, we have continued to keep feed out of two sites, Bartlett High School and Park Ave Elementary. We have been working and delivering to Head Start and to North Village, and we also stop at Slater Street. So after, and we've continued to pay all of our staff, and our staff had worked up through the last day of school. We need to revisit that and take a look at it. We are going to be downsizing to one site. So we are closing our Bartlett High School site, and we will be serving out of Park Ave only. Our staff, our summer staff is staying on, and we've, we have many staff members who just don't want to work this summer, who also do other things, who do daycare, who babysit their grandchildren, who do things. So rather than going out and looking for more staff, we're going to reduce ours to one site and keep delivering to Head Start, North Village. As long as we're breaking even, and we can fund that, because you know, we're not doing, our numbers have been right around six hundred meals, between six and seven hundred meals a day. As long as we continue to maintain that number, we can continue to operate and handle the deliveries. But we're just going to have to keep an eye on it. If the numbers start to dwindle, because I don't know what families are doing over the summer, if they're going to continue coming to our sites, we might have to backtrack and back off a little bit. So we're going to be monitoring that closely. But sites, new sites will start on June 15th. So on Monday, June 15th, our Bartlett site will be closed. We'll be serving out of Park Ave. The packages from eleven to one. They will be delivering to Head Start and North Village. And Head Start is from eleven to twelve. And North Village will just be their normal time. So we hope we can continue that through most of the summer, and our numbers will stay where, you know, we can continue to provide that service to the town. We will continue to update our menus online and post that. And if anybody has any concerns or anything that they need, they can always reach out to myself or Ellen Island, and we'll be happy to assist them in any way we can. If there's, if they need additional resources, we can put them in touch with somebody. So just, you know, I hope people reach out if needed. And that concludes my food service report. There's a lot going on. Any questions?
Just a quick comment?
Sure.
You know, once again, you guys are really coming through for all of us here in Webster and the families that are finding themselves in this uncharted territory. And I just want to extend my sincere thanks to you and Ellen and the whole team for continually finding new ways to feed our kids nutritious food. Much appreciated.
Very welcome. We're happy to do it. Okay, next item is the boiler project. We are underway. They are making a mess. As you know, we are replacing one of our, well, we are removing one of our boilers. We're not fully replacing it, but we are getting a new boiler put in. With, with everything going on, it's very quiet around here. We decided, why not start that project a little early? So they have been working for the past week in the boiler room, removing a lot of piping and getting ready, doing some electrical, getting ready for the company to come in and remove the boiler. It is pretty messy back there. I was in there this morning, tiptoeing around with all kinds of stuff in there. But they are hoping to come actually remove the boiler starting on the 22nd. We got some proposals. There was some asbestos, so there'll be an abatement inside the boiler itself, inside some of the roping. So they are aware of that. They tested it. That was built into the project in the proposal, so we are prepared for that. And then, once that's removed, that'll take a couple of weeks, then they'll start with the installation of the new boiler. But we are moving ahead on that. And, you know, as they're back there, the timing, could it be any better? Because as they're working, we had discovered in our good boiler, another leak in one of the sections in the good boiler.
Use that term loosely when you say good.
I know, exactly. And, you know, the positive news is that they think it, it's in one of the sections, but they think right now that they can just block it off and bypass that. I'm learning lots about boilers. I'm learning that one, one of those giant boilers in there does about six million BTUs. Can push out about six million BTU. So that's why the one boiler can heat that building. So it can do without one of those mid-sections. So hopefully, that's it. I told them I'm going to stop walking back there, because every time I walk back into the room, they say, oh, this is leaking, or this is, you know, we found this. So I just said, well, if I don't go back there, nothing will break, or I can't see anything. So it'll only be good news moving forward, right? But we're happy to get that underway. If there's no questions on that, I will jump right into warrant articles. As Dr. Gogan has said, we've been having multiple, multiple conversations with the town accountant and the town administrator about what our budget looks like coming up, and trying to guess what our budget is going to look like coming up. And as part of the new budget moving forward, we are looking at our warrant articles and saving some money from our free cash so that it'll be available in FY21 to offset our budget if needed. We had looked back at scaling some of the warrant articles back. They are looking to carry over about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think free cash was about 1.4. They all, we all agree that things still need to get done. There is the Town Beach article they had that they needed to match a certain amount. And there are some maintenance items. So we are prioritizing by maintenance. So we both agreed that we will be pulling the warrant article for the mini buses. Without knowing what school's going to look like in the fall, we're going to be sending out our kids less, especially maybe in our eighteen to twenty-two program, they won't have the ability to go out as much. And that's where we were going to see a lot of our savings. I probably, in two years of that program, would have saved enough to pay for one of our buses. So it just doesn't seem viable at this time. I don't want to purchase two buses. Not to say that down the road, we're not going to need them, but at this point, I don't think it's necessary to purchase two buses to have them sit out in our backpacking lot and, and not get a money's worth out of them. So we will be pulling that warrant article, but we are still moving forward with the renovation of the tennis courts. That is a maintenance item. We need to fix it. We need to address it before it deteriorates anymore. And we end up with a tennis court that we can't use, like we have a track where we can't hold track meets. So we agree that it's important that we need to maintain our facilities and maintain our fields for new use. Our tennis courts get a lot of use throughout the community. So we will be moving forward with that warrant article, but holding off on the buses. And I think that concludes my report. I might have been longer than you, Ruth Ann. I like it.
That's unusual.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Let me just state the obvious, Mrs. Perangeli. Let me just thank you for, I know everyone's been working really, really hard during these unique times, but I just want to say it was a pleasure. We'll continue to work together, but thank you for all your efforts during this pandemic. I know you've been going in on a regular basis and really working with everybody and kind of keeping the ship moving forward in the office. So thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Unless the members object, unfortunately, we have an extremely long agenda item, agenda this evening. And although you're more than welcome to stay with us throughout the night, Mrs. Jeffers, I am going to jump to item F under new business, which is, I'm assuming this is why you're here, approval of memorandum of agreement, Webster Educators Association RIF notification. And again, since my wife is a member of the WEA, I am going to recuse myself and ask Mrs. Siddiqui to please chair this item.
Dr. Gogan, can you tell us about the RIF notification for the WEA?
I can. Thank you. In the WEA contract, there is a notification deadline of notifying staff by June 15th for any reductions in force. Because we do not really know what our budget's going to look like, we would have had to make probably the worst-case scenario assumptions to make sure that we met that contractually, that contractual deadline. Working collaboratively with the union, we've been meeting once or twice a week throughout this entire remote learning. We're a phone call away from each other. We take the livelihood of our staff very seriously, and we want to make decisions based on real data. We're not, we weren't really able to do that. So we've been working with the WEA union to do a memorandum of understanding where we would be waiving that contractual deadline date to October 31st. At October 31st, we hope by then, we hope to have a budget by August or September, and we also hope to know more about our school model. Without those two very key, important things, it's very hard to figure out staffing and what we're, what we really need. So Mrs. Jeffers is here to talk a little bit about our agreement that we are going to present to you for hopefully approval.
Yes, we did work. We did a lot. I, I think I met with more people this past week or so that we've been talking about this than throughout the whole pandemic, which is amazing if you knew how much time that Ruth Ann and I spent on meetings throughout the pandemic. But we both agreed, as did the members of the WEA, that this really helped our members, helped the district, because we don't know. It's all so because we don't know. It's all so confusing. It's all so up in the air. Um, by extending the date to October 31st, hopefully we will get a clearer picture by then. Um, you know, talk to your senators in, in Washington DC and your, your congressmen and women. And let's hope they can get some help to the states and then we'll be able to have a clearer picture of what everyone's budget will be. Um, because that's the, I think the only thing that's gonna help in this, this case. But we did agree to an October 31st date, um, that we will hold off on any reduction in force until then.
Thank you. Well, the memorandum of understanding is in your packet. Um, I don't, I'm not gonna read it. Um, it was drafted by an, our school attorney and the MTA attorney has reviewed it. And, um, we've collaboratively come to an agreement and we're presenting it for your approval tonight.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Webster Educators Association regarding the RIF notification.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Laura, would you pull the committee?
Member McCarron?
Yes.
Member Naparata?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui?
Yeah.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Chairman Herten?
Abstain. Thank you very much, Mrs. Siddiqui and Mrs. Jeffers. You're more than welcome to stay on. I'm not trying to get rid of you. I just wanted to give you the choice.
Now I'm gonna go watch the, the, um, the state graduation on TV.
Oh, that's right. That's on the 30, yeah.
A few minutes.
All right. Have a good.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
I gotta turn to my next screen. Bye.
So continuing on with the agenda, the, uh, next item on the agenda under old business is a monthly report on fundraising applications. Again, school committee policy requires us to review all approved fundraising applications. We don't approve them. They're approved by the building principal and the superintendent. Unfortunately, we haven't had many lately because the kids really have not been in school. But we do have one that was approved, the Webster Music Boosters. It seems like they are selling Bartlett High School face masks. Is that correct? And if anyone is interested in purchasing a face mask, they should probably reach out to Mr. Carney or the folks at the Webster Music Boosters.
Yes.
Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, next item on the agenda is the FY20 budget update. I assume Mrs. Prangeli and/or Dr. Gogan.
Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you. Yeah, we are working through, um, the FY20 budget. Um, trying to close, get a really good idea, uh, what we're gonna have left at the end of the year. We will see a surplus. Um, I'm, I'm still waiting for some special ed information to come back. Um, from one of our assistants, just trying to get a handle to make sure we have all of our tuitions in Humbert and there's nothing out there that I don't know about. Uh, we're also waiting for some transportation information to come in. And, um, this coming week will be our final teacher's payroll, which is a big part of our end of year numbers. So after that, we'll have a much, uh, we'll have a real clear idea of what our total surplus is. Again, we are focusing on, um, I'll be focusing on getting any end of year supplies, our custodial supplies and paper and things like that, that we've been highly encouraged to purchase out of the end of year. We're also looking at, um, prepaying tuition. I will try not to touch any school choice money, which I don't think, um, I will need to. Um, I think we're gonna be in good shape. And I'm also trying to get an idea as far as what our food service deficit is gonna be. As you know, I mentioned before with our continuing to pay our staff through the end of school year and our numbers and meal counts are down compared to what we were serving every day as a district throughout, we will be offsetting that. Um, so I'm hoping to have a real, uh, good idea within the next two weeks to give you more definitive, definite numbers. Um, but Dr. Gogan and I have been updating, um, and talking about this as an ongoing basis. And, um, we are working through the end of the year. It's, it's, there's so much going on right now. We're being pulled in a million directions. So, um, we're getting it done slowly, but surely. We're getting it, getting through it.
Any questions or comments for Mrs. Prangeli? Hearing none, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda and everybody's favorite topic is approval of revised FY21 budget for town meeting.
I, I just want to start by stating, um, again, there's been an air of, um, positive things that have happened throughout this pandemic. Um, and I, I, I hope that you're noticing that. The remote setting that we're all in has really forced us all to have increased communication about everything. Double, triple times, make sure everybody knows. Um, so there's been a, a, a team effort. Um, we've been not only working with the unions and the teachers and the administrators, we've been working with the town. We have, um, been tasked by the town to reduce our existing FY21 budget that you approved by a million and $50. Um, that's a lot of money. Is that, Mo, did you say something?
One million, 50,000.
50,000.
Yep.
And we took a very strategic approach. Um, I know in the budget that we presented to you, um, we were counting on, um, school, um, student opportunity funding, and we had a lot of, um, new positions. So our first approach for this reduction was to look at those positions and see what we needed. So we, should we show them the graph? Mo, should we put the graph on the screen or just speak to it?
Um.
You have the graph in your folders, correct?
When you say graph, do you mean the chart?
Yes, the chart. So I, I can briefly speak a little bit about it, our approach, just to, um, we were, you know, keeping the kids in the classrooms first. Um, we went through and we've been working with our district leadership team and prioritizing needs. And if we take a look at Park Avenue, um, we had originally requested an additional grade four teacher. Um, looking more closely at our school enrollment projections, um, we decided we could move a grade three teacher up to grade four. Um, and we also don't know if we're gonna be having full classrooms come into the school. Um, there may be the potential of having a class being split because some of the guidance coming out is saying that only 12 students and teachers can be in one classroom at a time to keep this socially distance of six feet apart. So we are not requesting a grade four teacher in this new proposed budget. We did present to you in our first, um, budget that we would like two new special education teachers at Park Avenue School. Um, we would like to recommend hiring one and using potential CARES Act funding. Um, we are projected to get about $580,000. Um, we are applying for that and we are going to be using that fully for FY21. Um, we are not looking to hire that.
Loser?
We lost her.
Zach, you're at Mo. I'm on board. I'm on board. So she talked about, um, paying, uh, getting the actual special education teacher out of the CARES Act. Um, we are looking for the new .5 speech assistant that's still in there. And we are transferring, um, one power to the high school for the journey program. They are not, oh, there she is. She's back.
I think it's so funny. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all good. So I was just kind of finishing up with the, I was at the Journey Power, just saying how we were transferring one over and there was one open position.
Given that we expect half of our students in school at one time, um, we decided that that was a, a good, um, reduction. As we move on to the middle school, um, uh, we are, were looking at, um, eliminating the dean position. Um, we are, uh, we would like to continue to have that additional .5 ELL teacher. Um, and we had requested originally in the FY21 budget that you, um, approved three additional teachers for seventh and eighth grade. After a thorough look at the schedule, uh, Heidi Peterson, the new principal, feels that she does not need them. So these are not, um, people, these are positions that we would not be requesting to be filled. Um, we had originally asked for an additional counselor over at the middle school. We're not going to be asking for that, but we will be funding one of our existing counselors through the CARES Act. Um, we are also looking and I had asked you for a, um, nursing assistant that would be shared between Bartlett and the Webster Middle School. Given the health epidemic that we're in, we, we would like to still hire that, um, position. Um, and we're looking at the CARES Act for that. We have some current vacant ABA positions, one at the, um, high school, and we would not be filling that. That's been open all year. And we had originally asked for a tiered two Journey Para-professional at the middle school, and we would like to fill that and use the CARES Fund Act for that. As we move on to the high school, um, we, with the number of students, again, we would not be filling the dean position. We would be asking to fill that foreign language position, the .4 that we requested in the original budget. Um, the athletic director position, we're looking to reduce, um, to a .8 FTE. Again, the nursing assistant, we're, um, looking to fund through the CARES Act and a Journey Power for tiered two support for our students. We'd like that. That would be a new position at the high school and that would be funded through the CARES Act. And then we would, um, in talking to, um, Mrs. Barris and the special education programming, we would be able to eliminate two, um, existing para-professional positions. Um, but with the new journey positions, um, actually, we're pleased to say that the existing staff would not be affected. There'd be some shifts. Um, if we look further into the district and the special education, we are proposing making the reduction of, um, the central office administrative assistant from a 1-0 to a, a .5. And, um, again, we had requested in the original FY21 budget, two new ABA positions. Um, and as I mentioned, we had a vacant one. We would be eliminating that request, um, and reducing the, um, position to 26.8. Um, that, that demonstrates, um, quite a reduction, um, but keeping intact our teaching staff, um, with what we were tasked to do. So tonight, we'd like to ask you to, um, certainly we'll answer any questions about the budget and how we went about it. Um, and then we ask, like to ask you to approve that and bring this budget to the town meeting.
Any questions or comments from the committee? So I know there's a lot of uncertainty, as you reiterated, and this probably won't get finalized until earliest August, pot, you know, late July, uh, early August, potentially closer to September. Just so everyone is aware, the, the fact that we are allocating or the town is banking on the CARES Act money, that is assuming that the current legislation has changed. So I just want to make sure everyone who's watching is aware that we can't actually use the CARES Act money yet for purposes of replenishing lost revenue unless the actual law that was passed is changed. And I know that there's momentum to potentially change it and, and to revise that portion of the CARES Act. But I believe the number was about 1.5 million of the CARES Act money for the entire town is based on assumption that the law is going to change. And that's a.
Correct. And, and, but there's two CARES Acts. So the school, the school district is getting money through the CARES Act. That's a given. We are writing the application and applying for that and that funds we can use. Um, I believe it's about $600,000 that we're getting.
584.
And, I'm sorry, Ruthann?
I think it's about five, Janice, 584.
Allocations come out for private schools, we end up down to 500 and something for the public school system. So, um, that money we are applying for and, and what you see in our budget, that's the CARES Act for the school department. But what the town is doing as a whole is they are offsetting their FY21 with 1.5 million in money that the town, um, was allocated to receive for, um, CARES money for PPE and stuff. And there is legislation going through right now, um, to use that money to offset, um, any loss in revenues for FY21. So this budget is balanced based on, uh, receiving that 1.5 million dollars.
And just so you're aware, and again, I know this changes probably daily, when the selectman met last Monday and approved the overall town budget, the town administrator and the town accountant presented that we as a district reduce our budget by 950,000.
I think it changed after that meeting.
But that's the number that's been presented by, that's the number that was approved by the selectman. Just so you know, unless they have, unless they have an additional meeting, they, they usually schedule one right before town meeting. But that was the dollar amount that was approved by the selectman at the last meeting I watched, which was last Monday. This is.
With, um, the town accountant on that because that was different and we talked just, um, just this week we talked because we're going to FinCom on Monday with a million 50. So I'll have to figure that out or what changed since then. Um, I'll ask to see what they approved.
Do you know the net increase from current to .8 of an athletic director?
How much?
Yeah, what is the net increase of that position?
I think it was $10,000.
Okay. The only big concern I have, and I understand your planning, hopefully, on, uh, approving or getting this position paid through the CARES Act is actually that school counselor at the middle school. I understand having to eliminate the new one, but I would be very, very concerned as a parent if you have to eliminate the dean, which I totally agree with, at the same time eliminating, um, the third counselor. I understand you're paying for it right now in the CARES Act. But again, that CARES Act's not a guaranteed funding source yet.
It is for the schools, David. It is for us. So the money that, actually, if we needed it for FY20, for this current fiscal year, we could have accessed it to finish out this year.
You do.
So it's pretty solid for, for the schools, the towns, the, the way that the town can use it is, is the thing that's questionable right now.
So we do have approval of the grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So again, just so folks who are watching, this is very confusing. The, the decrease from our current budget, which is really what we're losing in essence, because most of the, in, most of the loss or the cuts were made by positions we were trying to add on. Then the reduction from the current budget is 242,000, which is bad. But there are a lot of districts that are struggling with much worse numbers and it could get worse in the future depending on what the final state aid ends up being, what that dollar amount looks like. Is this based on a 20% reduction in state aid?
Yes.
It is, but it includes, but it includes the 1.5 million from the CARES Act, correct?
Correct. And that's why they're hoping to carry some of that 750,000 over in free cash because if for some reason the CARES Act doesn't go through and there's an adjustment, they have that fund. They have those funds that at least offset a little bit.
And have you budgeted, I know these guidelines just came out, have you budgeted anything in this budget for additional supplies that are gonna be required with all the PPP and all the cleaning that's going to have to occur?
That is also CARES Act money.
Right.
That's part of the 650 you mentioned?
Yes.
And you've included, so the new, the positions that you're paying for by the CARES Act, you have a, a bucket of that money already set aside for additional PPE and other costs associated with?
Uh, roughly, I think about 180. I thought that was the last number we had, about $180,000 set aside. And then we do have, um, part of that CARES Act money, the, um, public, the private schools get some access to that as well. So we've allocated. public, the private schools get some access to that as well. So we've allocated that. And then we're trying to order what we can now.
Okay.
So I want to be upfront, this is a reduced budget by what we were requested to reduce by the town. It is the minimal impact on our students and staff. And I think it's, if we could get this, this would be ideal. Ideal, if this is what actually happens. We have to prepare ourselves for the unknown. We're not going to know what our budget is until August or September. And we, and the budget's one piece of the puzzle. The other piece is the school model and what that school model will entail, whether we'll need more staff, whether we'll need less staff. Really, we can't guess at that until we know what the structure is going to be. So this is, as you said before, David, things change by the day. Things change by the day, literally. And we're doing our very best to stay on top of that and to be transparent with the unknowns. So we were pleased with this version of the budget. And I hope that that is what our reality is.
I guess I would say we're satisfied. I don't think we're pleased, but we're satisfied.
You know, you guys were better than I. When they were talking about some of the initial, you know, obviously, if the 1.5 million in CARES Act money on the town side doesn't come through, it's, it's going to be a lot worse. And then I know we're trying to get through FY21. Now the question becomes what happens in FY22, because that, that revenue source is obviously just-
It's a one-time source. Exactly. Which is why we're trying to be strategic about living through this once back in 2008, 2009, trying to make sure that, you know, we're being mindful of our school choice, we're being mindful of our circuit breaker, and just keeping an eye, really close eye and trying not to utilize any of that now.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. What is the pleasure of the committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Siddiqui.
I would like to make a motion to approve the budget as amended.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And again, let me just reiterate to the entire district leadership team, I know this work is not over and it's going to continue for quite some time. But thank you for all your efforts up to this point in trying to figure out, you know, multiple budgets from a revenue standpoint, as well as multiple budgets from an operational standpoint. So thank you. Hearing no further discussion, Laurie, to pull the committee, please.
Member McCarran?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Chairman Herten?
Yes. Next item on, under new business is acceptance of donation from It Starts From Home, 150 school supply bags. Dr. Gobin.
As you know, Jill St. Seer has started the organization, It Starts At Home, and she helped us out through the holidays and continues to think of creative ways how to help our families. She and her donors donated 150 bags of little school supplies, crayons, papers that were distributed over on May 21st over at Park Avenue School. We'd like you to officially accept that, and we want to publicly thank them and every donor for constantly thinking about our Park Avenue students.
Any questions or comments from the committee? And again, once again, on behalf of the committee, thank you very much to the folks at It Starts From Home for continuing to support our students. I will entertain a motion to accept the donation of 150 school supply bags from It Starts From Home.
So moved.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, to pull the committee, please.
Member McCarran?
Well, Mr. McCarran?
Member Siddiqui?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Chairman Herten?
Yes, it's a unanimous vote and the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of donation from Home Depot craft kits. Dr. Gobin.
Thank you. The Webster Middle School staff are working on collecting a donation of about 500 hands-on kits from the Home Depot in Rutland, Vermont. We'd like to have that officially accepted and publicly thank them. As you know, kids love hands-on projects, and I think we put some of the flyers in your school committee packet so you could see what the fun kits look like.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the donation of craft kits from Home Depot.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And again, on behalf of the entire committee, I want to thank Home Depot for their support of our children. Hearing no further discussion, Laurie, to pull the committee, please.
Member McCarran?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Chairman Herten?
Yes, it's a unanimous vote and the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of donation from Boston Children's Hospital bike helmets. Dr. Gobin.
Thank you. As you know, our partnership with MAFRA has expanded to a partnership with the Boston Children's Hospital Injury Prevention Specialist Barbara Giurloomo. And she's been coming for the last three years to Park Ave to do safety lessons in individual classrooms and assemblies over at the middle school and has helped us out on the safety day. She has reached out recently and is going to be setting up, passing out free helmets at Park Avenue School this Friday for anyone who needs them with flyers and with little links on video clips for parents to make sure helmets fit correctly. She's also going to be giving a box of helmets to the Webster Middle School principal, so the Webster Middle School principal can pass them out next year. And I want to let you know that we have two volunteer paraprofessionals that are going to step up and help Barbara on Friday. And that's Kathy N., I'm not going to even try to say her last name, and Barbara Brandon Wade. So I want to thank our paraprofessionals for helping out on that day. And ask you to accept that donation.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the donation from Boston Children's Hospital, the bike helmets.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And once again, on behalf of the committee, I just want to thank Boston Children's Hospital and MAFRA for the tremendous partnership we have with them. Hearing no further discussion, I will entertain a most, I'm sorry, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member McCarran?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Chairman Herten?
Yes, it's a unanimous vote and the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is adoption of social studies curriculum. Dr. Gobin.
First, I'm going to just say, we don't stop. We've, we've done a lot of work over the last three years to put some structures in place for curriculum, and the work has not stopped. I'm going to pass it over to Mrs. Daniels to talk a little bit about the pilot and what we would like you to accept.
Thank you, Dr. Gobin. So about a year ago, I reached out to our friends at McGraw-Hill and asked if they would be willing to allow us to have a free pilot in social studies. And this really fit within our curriculum renewal cycle where we kind of really went through all of the math throughout the district and ELA, and it really was time, and science for the most part. And it was really time to start with social studies at the middle school. So they graciously sent out all the materials for free. The teachers in grades five through eight have been utilizing them throughout the year. Grade five, the program's called Impact, and it covers US history, Making a New Nation. What the teachers loved about it is it had a lot of flexible resources, and it really supported a lot of the ELA literacy standards right within the program. And it mirrored a lot of the components within the WANDERS ELA program. Grade six and seven, they have the World Geography and Ancient Civilization, Part One and Two, one at each year. And grade eight covers the US, excuse me, United States and Massachusetts. They're all Massachusetts custom, newly custom-designed programs which align to the mass frameworks. So, and they've been utilizing it pretty much throughout the whole year, even through this stay home. So I put out a survey just to get their feedback because it is in the WEA teachers contract that we collaborate with them. They've had professional development throughout the, off and on throughout the year. So I really wanted to hear their comments about the usage of the program. There were, I think there was nine social studies teachers. Seven out of the nine responded to the survey and found out that the majority of those that did respond used the program 50 to 100% of the time within their classes. And 50% of them rated it either excellent or good. And six out of seven fully agreed to that we should adopt this program. We already have, we have it in the FY21 budget. For grade five, I think it's about a little over 13,000, 13,704, and grade six through eight is 40,187. I just want to mention that these are three-year, this is a three-year contract. I shied away from the one year. I wanted to really make, ensure that that the curriculum will have some consistency. So I'm looking for you to, as part of the WEA contract, you know, to officially adopt this curriculum. Thank you. If you have any questions. No tough ones, Dave.
I'm not, I have like 10 of them, but I'm not allowed to ask any. Any questions or comments from the committee?
I just want to add, it's my recommendation moving forward that we start looking, Webster Public School starts to look at the social studies curriculum, which feeds into the grade five. So we would hopefully maybe piloting, maybe not next year, but sometime in the near future at the K to four or two to four. So, so we end up building that lead into the middle school.
You just need to have to make sure you include that in your retirement memo to Dr. Gobin.
I will.
She doesn't forget.
She doesn't forget anything.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Again, thank you to you and the teachers and everyone involved in putting this together. I will entertain a motion to adopt the new social studies curriculum as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member McCarran?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Chairman Herten?
Yes, it's a unanimous vote and the motion passes. Next item on, you're welcome, sorry.
Did Ruth Ann leave?
She, she was frozen in time again.
I'll hold off a moment. Mo, do you want to wait for her on the next item for the IAs?
You're on mute, Mo.
Good call. Look at you, Mr. Emma, the little, the host would like you to unmute. Thank you for that reminder. So as Dr. Gobin said with-
Look, I'm sorry, I didn't announce it. Do you want to, do you want to handle that one?
Oh, sure.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is approval of memorandum of agreement instructional assistance RIF notification. Mrs. Prangely, sir.
Thank you, thank you. I know as I get going, she's going to jump back in, but again, like the WEA, we have been in constant communication with our unions. Dan and I have scheduled meetings every week to go over items with them and just keep, keep, keep talking and communicating what's working, what's not working. Any issues, any concerns, and we're trying to keep them as much up to date with, as we can with the budget items. We met with the instructional assistants and looking to extend RIF notifications. In your packet, you should have an agreement from the instructional assistants to extend their RIF notification until October 31. Ms. Boyso was a pleasure to work with and very collaborative. She couldn't be here tonight, but she did submit a letter. I'm happy to read it if you'd like, Mr. Chairman.
Would you please? I was going to, so yeah, just so it's on the record.
Sure. She said it was addressed to the Webster School Committee, and it was from Linda. She's the president of the Paraprofessionals Association. Here she is, she's back. Do you want me to continue, or do you want to jump in?
My apologies.
Her letter states, "Due to the uncertainties of the budget, on May 27, 2020, Superintendent Gogan requests a waiver to extend the June 30 date of sending out letters for any employees that may be affected by a reduction in force. After contacting the members of the board and discussing it, we voted to grant the waiver to be extended to October 31, 2020. It has been my pleasure to work with Superintendent Gogan and Winnie Prangely throughout these difficult times. They've both been working closely with me and have been in communication frequently from text, email, phone calls, and Zoom meetings. The line of communications have always been open between us. Their willingness and collaboration to work together has been impressive." Linda, so you want to jump in, Dr. Gobin? I was just updating the committee that, you know, like the WEA, we cannot thank them enough for their collaboration and willing, willingness to work with us during this unknown time.
They've been great. And the date in their contract was June 30. And once again, without real data, it's very hard to make difficult decisions. And I think being open and honest with both unions about where we are and both having the priority of protecting our existing staff and wanting to not disrupt people's livelihoods unnecessarily got us to this point where we're working very nicely together. So I want to give a shout out to them as well. And we'd ask, we'd like to ask you to approve this memorandum of understanding.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the I'm sorry, the memorandum of agreement between the instructional assistants and the school committee regarding RIF notifications as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, to pull the committee, please.
Member McCarran?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui? Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Chairman Herten?
Yes, it's a unanimous vote and the motion passes. We've already covered item F. Next item on the agenda is approval of job description, Director of Curriculum and Instruction for Literacy Title I in English Language Learners. Dr. Gobin.
Yes. As you know, Mrs. Daniels is retiring in August, unless we convince her to stay between now and then. And we have been looking at her job description and structuring, as you know, having the English language learner responsibilities pushed over into that role. So the job description has been updated for your approval with that in it. Having stated that we are in uncertain times, multiple times through this meeting, I think it's important for the committee to know that we are holding off on hiring at this point, but we would like you to approve the job description, and we may post the position, but we are not going to make any final decisions about what we're doing until we really know what we have to deal with. And we'll be, I will be keeping you apprised of that. So it's pretty self-explanatory. There's a lot of multiple roles in this position, but I think with the support of our central office team and the structures that Mrs. Daniels is leaving us with, someone will be successful with the right experience.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Siddiqui?
I'm just, I'm continually impressed with the movement when it comes to creating job descriptions and really structuring up these roles as they become available or as you're able to begin these, the huge task of writing these job descriptions and providing clarity for any candidate that might be interested in the position and whoever winds up in-
whoever winds up in the position having, you know, a very well-structured roadmap for, you know, success. So thank you. I know it's no small undertaking from personal experience.
I want to give out a shout out to our team. So you know, we work very collaboratively, and this job description, this job description in particular has gone through all of us multiple times, has been multiple renditions and multiple eyes on it. We are taking a look at other job descriptions. It's been one of those projects on the back burner, but our administrative assistant, Desiree, has been working on job descriptions, and you're going to start to see them come forward in chunks. Some of them are existing positions, but, and we're making little tweaks. So that is a project that we have been slowly working behind the scenes on, so you'll see more of that.
Any other-
Am I frozen?
Nope.
Oh, good.
I just paused. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the I'm sorry? I'll entertain a motion to approve the job description, Director of Curriculum and Instruction for Literacy Title One and English Language Learners as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member McCarran?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui? Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Chairman Herten?
Yes, it's a unanimous vote and the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the bullying prevention and intervention policy, YICFB dash R, second reading. Any changes to this, Dr. Gogan?
None.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? So again, it is school committee policy that whenever a new policy or revised policy is presented by administration, it is read at three different meetings. This will constitute the second reading with the intent of the new policy being read and approved hopefully at the following meeting. Next item on the agenda is discussion of budget with remote learning and transition back.
I don't want to talk too long about this. I think we've spoken across the evening about it. Given the unknowns, we're not waiting until August to sort of have a strategic plan. We've got some different versions of what things might look like, and those are moving and in motion. And I just want to, I put this on the agenda to make you aware that, one, there's a lot of work that's going into the budget right now, the budget unknowns and the budget plannings and, you know, what what versions of school could look like and what we would potentially need, and what does that represent in a budget? So we've been doing a lot of work, and I just wanted to put that out there to let you know that, one, we're not taking this lightly. Two, we are doing our best to create budgets that are in alignment with our goals, and our goals remain focused on our students and their success. So I just kind of wanted to put that on there. Monique, I don't know, do you have anything else to add, or Janice, on the work that we've been doing in terms of trying to figure out the unknown?
Yeah, it's difficult, and there's a lot of discussion and a lot of feedback. But, you know, we need, we need to have these conversations now and start preparing, because we don't know what it's going to be like in a month and two months and three months. So the sooner we have these discussions, we can start working through the process of, you know, coming up with other alternatives, but we are having these conversations daily. So it's a process. They're difficult, so.
Any questions or comments from the committee? The only thing I would say, and I say this every year, I think, you know, I would just urge all community members and especially all the parents, obviously, to watch this process closely. This is a very unique year in a lot of ways. And I would just encourage all the parents, and I know you have an open door policy, Dr. Gogan, as well as Mrs. Perangeli, you know, to follow what's potentially decisions, very difficult decisions that have to be made. And certainly, if you have any questions, to reach out to you and just pay attention to what's going on. Continuing on, thank you very much. Continuing on with the agenda, the next item is review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. We, the warrant was in our packet. Are there any questions about the warrant? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the warrant as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member McCarran?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui? Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Chairman Herten?
Yes, it's a unanimous vote and the motion passes. And next item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member McCarran?
Yes.
Member Siddiqui?
Yeah.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Chairman Herten?
Yes, meeting adjourned.
You need to, you need to give one final hammer with the hammer.
I don't have one.
You took your hammer home, right?
I don't have one. I have a pen.
Come on.
Meeting adjourned.
Very nice.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Michael, for all your help.
Thanks, guys.